All right, and it is past the 5:15 time on January 21st. I will call the meeting to order. National roll call.
Peterson.
Here.
Nipper.
Here.
Shaven.
Here.
Kroger.
Here.
Kelly.
Not here.
Thank you.
On our way.
On our way.
We have gotten the amended agenda yesterday. There are four. I don't think there's any changes anymore.
Nope.
Anything else? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion. Second.
Motion. Peterson, second by Shaven.
Roll call, Peterson.
Aye.
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any conflicts, state those now or along the way. Hearing none. Move on to the consent agenda. All enacted by one motion, one roll call. We have the minutes of the January 7th council meeting, the January 7th council work session, and then the minutes of the January 14th council work session. Also, the claims list 1330, the amount of $139,665.19. Any changes, the larger ones? Questions pending for Ashley? Expenditure and revenue reports for the month of December of '24. HMU sewer landfill reconciliation report for the December of '24. Sheriff's digital report for December of '24. Salaries paid in 2024. And then we will instruct the clerk to publish the same. And a renewal application for Family Dollar number 33183, Class B alcohol license. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Nipper, second by Kroger.
Roll call, Peterson.
Aye.
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Thank you.
Then next up, we have under other business, the approved handbook updates for residency. Actually, they sent those to us. Are we updating, changing?
We are taking out the residency required for the city administrator, city clerk, finance director, and fire chief.
Any discussion on that?
This is existing language. We're just removing that portion.
That portion, and then there's a...
Another little portion of the sentence. Are all positions that 30-minute response time?
Besides those three.
Besides those three? It's not 15 minutes, it's 30 minutes?
30 minutes, yep.
Will that now become 30 minutes?
What are those three positions, yep.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Logical, didn't he?
Yeah. This day and age, things change a little bit. All right, is there a motion to approve that portion of the handbook change?
Hmm? Second.
Motion by Shaven, second by Peterson.
Roll call, Peterson.
Aye.
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Review and approve street closing permits for Laurel and Harlem events, May through August of 2025. Think there's any difference from previous years?
No complaints.
No way.
Then accounting approved this morning for them to use their grounds, so...
It's a great event downtown.
The Jagers will cover the liability insurance on the square.
Okay.
I'd move to approve that street closing.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Peterson.
Roll call, Peterson.
Aye.
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Thank you.
Then we need to receive and file the Park and Rec Committee meeting minutes from January 14th of 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Shaven.
Roll call, Peterson.
Aye.
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Thank you.
And a couple items out of that meeting. Review the recommendation for the pool hours, new pool hours for 2025. Sunday through Friday from 1 until 8:00 p.m. And Saturdays, noon until 7:00.
For the existing?
The one changing is Saturday, it's usually noon to 8:00. But he said the hour from 7:00 to 8:00 is the slowest hour of the week, so...
Then usually it'll open at 1:00? That would be noon?
Um...
On Sunday?
On Saturday, or Sunday through Friday, it's 8:00, or 1:00 to 8:00. So it's just getting rid of that one hour, because they said it doesn't pay to have it open.
But the Monday through, or the Sunday through Friday till 8 o'clock is...
Yep.
Busy? I'd move to approve those.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Shaven.
Roll call, Peterson.
Aye.
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Thank you.
And also, review the recommendation for pool pass sale for the month of April.
So, family passes are $20 off, and single passes are $20 off for the month of April. The month it's been for the last couple of years.
That's what we've done.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And it's about 50/50 on those that buy in April and those that don't. $20 bucks is $20 bucks.
Right.
I'm moving to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Shaven.
Roll call, Peterson.
Aye.
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, we need to receive and file the Airport Commission meeting minutes from January 15th of 2025.
Motion.
Second.
You guys are...
Sorry.
Keep your thing going.
Motion by Shaven, second by Kroger.
Roll call, Peterson.
Aye.
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Thank you.
And out of that, we need to review the recommendation to move forward with the IDOT aviation grant for a new fuel facility.
This doesn't, this doesn't commit us to any dollars, right?
Right.
We're just applying for the grant.
Just applying for the grant.
That's how I read that, so...
And it's due in May, but they thought it would be good to get it started now.
Well, the fuel facility has been on their agenda for quite some time, so...
And it's projected, on their five-year CIP, it is recommended to have it in '26, so...
I would motion to approve.
Second.
Good job, Richard. Motion by Kroger, second by Peterson.
Roll call, Peterson.
Aye.
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Thank you.
And then we need to receive and file 2023-2024 fiscal year audit, which was some light reading.
Word for word.
Which I think the auditor signed up on, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, there weren't many changes.
It's kind of the standard stuff every year, seems like, internally checks and balance things and whatever. We talk about it every year.
Occasion to do this, but...
It's hard when you have a small town.
Right, we can't hire people if I...
They can be able to distribute, but small town is hard.
Yeah. All right.
I would move to receive and file fiscal year audit.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Peterson.
Roll call, Peterson.
Aye.
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Thank you.
And then we need to review professional services agreement with Snyder and Associates for 2025 street improvement project. And I think that is where Jeff is...
Yeah, we've had them pass, work with us. We've got one block on Baldwin Street from 12th to 13th. Usually when we mill an overlay, it is that. And that block wasn't milled at one time and just overlaid, and covers up the curb and gutter. And through the past, where it's just deteriorated, there is no curb and gutter per se. They're going to go in there and put specs out for that. That way, you're not having any of this when you go to asphalt. Otherwise, if you get high spots, sits in the driveways, and you're going back in and cutting driveways out to fix everything. It's, it'll be, just like our Willow and Durant project two years ago. They engineered all that, so the specs were right. Once they get the curb and gutter in, the asphalt will come in, match up to the curb line. And otherwise, it's kind of a guessing game for the overlay guys. It gets into me more problems. So I recommend that we go with them.
But it's for this 15-block area, though, not just that Baldwin Street?
They're designing just that block for the curb and gutter. And then I'll have a guy running with me through the rest of the project, overseeing, you know, checking temps for loads, make sure they're coring out bad spots. When I get called away from up there, nobody's watching them. They can hide stuff that pops up later, like what happened here. We've got eyes on it all the time. And that'll be just a one-man guy running with me. And we'll hourly pay him through the project. I'll set his hours when I think, you know, especially during the overlay. The mill part of it, not so much. But the overlay part of it, when he's reading temps coming out of the truck, if that load is too cold to put down, he can reject it and getting core samples out of it. It's just, in the last four years, it's better to have that oversight to make sure everything's running right. I might get called out half hour at a time, and, you know, they can pave a block pretty quick. If I'm not there to catch a soft spot to where, say, you gotta core that out before you can asphalt it over, because it's a soft spot. You got a soft spot, and you just put a thin layer of asphalt over it, so it won't hold. That's why we recommend having that oversight. And there is 15 blocks on the map right now, highlighted in yellow. I'm working with Ashley just to make sure where we're sitting on our funds between road used and lost. And we'll figure out if we go anymore or downsize just a little bit before we put it out for bids.
But essentially, those $10,000 is strictly the topography and design for that little section, right?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understood that right.
In which that will include the man for that project.
Anything else for Jeff?
I think I've been, no?
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve the agreement with Snyder and Associates for the 2025 street improvement project?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Nipper.
Roll call, Peterson.
Aye.
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks for that, Jeff, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for coming, Jeff.
You don't have to go walk them today.
Not tonight. Ask me when it's 80 degrees.
Next, we need to release the deferred loan agreement with Jacobs Corporation. That went to Todd.
It went to Todd, yep.
Was it an email back and forth from Todd and their representatives? So I was able to, I think you requested additional information and sharing.
I did, I did. I was just confused on which Jacobs Corporation location are we talking about? Because this language doesn't tell me that. I want a physical address.
I think it's the...
So is the 12th Street, like the original Jacobs Corp?
Yeah, the original, when they started.
That used to be, okay.
He didn't get that all well, then?
Many, very...
It's only 1995, wasn't it?
No, it was like 1987.
87?
I wasn't even born yet, so...
He wrote some commentary.
But Todd had no concerns with it, correct?
No, he had no concern. He just, he wanted more additional information from them, because they just sent me a letter saying, "Yeah, we're requesting a release." But, you know, I sent an email. They had to respond back from you guys saying, "We need more information." So they were able to draft this, and they say, "It's fine, just send to the council."
Very good, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Our motion to release the deferred loan agreement with Jacobs.
Motion.
Motion by Shaven, second by Kroger.
Should I?
Roll call.
Should I abstain?
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Thank you.
We're good, just to three then?
One out of the quorum.
Three out of four?
Four out of six.
All right. City Administrator's report.
All right. Don't need to stand up. So I had an opportunity to meet with most of the department heads. They came up to the office. I went to the fire station, and Roger was there. We talked, he showed me the inventory. And they share their updates on operation activities within their departments, which can help me just understanding what's going on. Also, Jean Getty stopped by here, and we had a conversation and shared essential updates on several outgoing projects. Also, I joined the IACMA League. So those were the city council, I mean, for the city administrators, that the league allowed me to, if I have any questions, at working with the rest of the group across the state, so... They focus it more on professional development through the conferences and networking, member services and personal aid, and the sharing problem and solutions. So pretty much, if you have a question, or something you don't understand, or there's a code, want to see if it's updated and stuff like that, you'd be able to put those questions out there. And...
They'll be able to answer back to you.
Usually instantly, you get feedback from people across the state. Participated in several board meetings, EMS training, all day. And the topic was talking about disaster recovery plan, which I'll go back and take a look at for the city part of it, what's going on in that area. And then currently, I'm working on job descriptions, because they're kind of aged. I sent some stuff back in 2004, 2005, and tasks and responsibilities have changed. So I sent an email to all the department heads and asked them, "Hey, just review, this is what we currently have. Take a look at it. If there's additional duties that you're doing that are listed in there, please get back to me." And some departments, they don't even have job descriptions, so I'm developing those and sending it back to them to take a look at it and send back to me. And then I'll share with the council for approval and stuff. Next project I'll be working on is a CIP. It's a capital improvement plan that will help provide the strategic, or broad map for infrastructure development and maintenance. So pretty much, they facilitate, help facilitate and grant applicants and external funding, support economic development, and prioritize essential projects. So pretty much, they'll be able to, there's a company called UME. I have a meeting with them on Friday, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Friday, yeah. So they'll go through that capital improvement plan, have to help us develop it, and be able to focus it. They can go up to 20, I mean, 10 to 20. So we're scheduling a meeting first, see what's, what kind of information they'll need from us. Cost of developing it and stuff. And then we'll be able to share back to you guys and come up with a plan. Because I had a meeting with the city minister of Volca, Tyler, last week, and he encouraged me to have it developed for the city of Harlem. And he shared his report with me, too. There's a lot of details in there, but good information, a good thing to have for the city. I'll find more information that on Friday.
Is that the one that's supposed to be done, like every five years? We do participants from the community? That's, that's the comprehensive plan. Yeah, this is capital improvement.
That's all I have so far.
That's a little bit.
Enough acronyms.
Anyone have anything for Jarvis? Yeah, thanks, Jarvis. Under my report, I need to appoint Judy Canutson to the Veterans Memorial Auditorium Commission for a three-year term expiring on April 19th of 2028.
It's moved. Second.
Motion by Shaven, second by Peterson.
Roll call, Peterson.
Aye.
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Thank you.
And then I also need to appoint, make a recommendation to appoint Chad Hightoff to fulfill the remaining term of Matt Worthy on the Veterans Memorial Auditorium Commission, expiring April 19th of '26.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Nipper, second by Shaven.
Roll call, Peterson.
Aye.
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, so I've got Shelby County Chamber of Commerce and Industry, Todd Horn.
Good evening.
Todd.
Just got a quick thank you and then a few dates to note. Thank you as regarding Saturday's legislative coffee. We had a really strong turnout for, especially for the January, because legislature really hasn't gotten into gear yet. They were just doing all their popping circumstance last week. We had great attendance, had a lot of really good questions. And just want to remind the public that the next legislative coffee will be February 15th, and that'll be at 10:00 a.m. And it's being held at and hosted by the Farm Bureau. January is National Blood Donor Month, and we still have one more area blood drive scheduled that would be tomorrow from 11:00 to 5:00 at St. Bonita, this parish center in West Felia. So if folks can get up and make a donation, give Joni a call at 747-6132. And in January, it's very important to try to continue to make those blood donations, because people just aren't getting out and moving around like they normally do. So it's great to see those donations get filled up. Thursday is the Harlem Community Library Books and Beyond kickoff at 5:00. That'll be at the Harlem Community Library here. This is their kickoff to their outdoor revitalization project. It's a fundraiser. So they'll have some snacks, they'll have some copies of the drawings for everybody to take a look at. And of course, the public is invited. Then Saturday, January 25th, Faith Family Church is having a Women's Winter Wellness Program. It's going to start at 8:00 in the morning. And this is a come-and-go event. They'll have some refreshments there. They'll have some information there, brochures on different wellness things that women can do. And they'll have a lot of different topics that they'll be discussing. And then also on Saturday, at the Emmanuel Lutheran Church, it's their 16th Annual Abel's Gaver and Frickadeller Feast from 5:00 to 7:00. That's always a very popular dinner. And then finally, Tuesday, February 4th, we're two medical centers. They'll be starting their grief share program. It runs from Tuesday, February 4th through March 11th. Theirs is in the morning, from 9:30 to 11:00. Now, there's not a cost to attend this, but you do have to register for it. And you can register by calling Kathy Jensen at 755-4424. And that's some dates from the chamber to keep an eye on it over the next couple of weeks. Any other questions? Okay.
Thanks, Todd.
Did Joe reach out to you?
No.
I guess maybe you're going to make it.
He was gonna, he said he was going to send an update to Jarvis, but he missed out on it.
Joe Richenberg, did he even say anything to you, Jarvis?
No.
No? Okay. All right. We'll move on. Shelby County Sheriff's update. Captain Butler.
I wasn't booked. First off, I'd like to introduce you guys to Dalton Murphy. He's our retired, started with us on Monday. He's a certified officer from Milford. He's up there providing here. He's originally from the Dunlap area, so he's kind of familiar with county. But a few days of administrative stuff. Tomorrow, some more administrative stuff, and then I'll start the FTO process on Thursday, so... Ethan Beery just completed FTO. Wren Cook is going to the next phase of his FTO, where he's not with a field trained officer anymore, but he'll be on his own with other guys working around him. So if questions arise, he's still covered. So hopefully, in the next few months, we have everybody on the road, in their shifts, and doing their own thing. And here's the wonderful School Resource Deputy, Private Field Unit. For our activity for December, we had 12 accidents, 48 traffic stops, 96 warnings. Sorry, traffic citations was 48, warnings was 96. Arrests were 13. No criminal initiatives, two thefts, 334 contacts, eight welfare checks, four residential or business alarms, and two animal complaints. You guys have any questions for us?
Makes you fully staffed now, then, right?
What's that?
You're fully staffed now?
Yes, we are completely staffed now. And then Raoul, who had left, is still part-time with us, so... We have 17 full-time and one part-time.
Thanks for your help.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thanks, Chad.
Thanks, Chad.
Public comments. Anything up here?
I have to say.
Now, Roger's here, are we getting an update or need anything?
I'm just here to answer questions.
Okay.
So today we had a virtual meeting with a representative from Sourcewell. It was myself and Troy, Jarvis, and our representative from Sourcewell, his name is Aaron Peterson, he's from Minnesota. So he kind of explained the process of how Sourcewell works, and so had answered a few questions. After that meeting, I, I went and looked for a, another competitive bid, so I was able to fill out the information, it'd be on the internet, and I'm, I'm just waiting, you know, I probably didn't submit it more than an hour and a half ago, so I'll wait to hear something from that. I don't know the timeframe on that.
So the Sourcewell, isn't that the partner that does the comparison for us, or if I got that confused?
Uh, yes, they, they go through the nationwide public bidding for the base unit, and then we alter our truck according to what options we want on it, what options we want to delete. Troy felt it was best interest if we still went out and got another bid. Legally, we don't have to, but.
That's a lot of money, we want to make sure we're spending that appropriately.
Yeah. So that's where we stand. Again, the, the contract that is presented to us, the price is good through January 30th, so there will be a 1% increase on February 1st, so. I went back and in case some may think, you know, I, I don't know if this is going through your mind or not, if you think this came up all fast, you know, all of a sudden we're talking about it. I went, I keep the file from all my budgets, and I went clear back to 2013, and I have put together a spreadsheet over the years, and this is typically when we're looking about every five years to replace a, a truck, so that way when we go through the whole fleet of seven, you know, we're getting an old truck that we're replacing. And so there's a total of eight budget cycles that I brought this up and reminded the council. Some of you were on, some of you were not, but that reminded you that this is where we're at with our schedule for rolling inventory to be replaced. And then one thing I was visiting with Jarvis about, if you heard me refer to NFPA, it's the National Guidelines that we follow for everything that we do. NFPA 1 is the Life Safety Code and all the way up through NFPA 5000, which addresses anything from operations to manufacturing of, of fire trucks, to the turnout gear that we wear, to the training standards that we have. It, it just addresses that all the way from beginning to end. This NFPA document here is 1911, it's the standard for inspections, maintenance, testing, and retirement of in-service fire apparatus.
From 1911?
It's NFPA 1911, that's the NFPA number.
Not the year.
No.
That's older than I am.
So there's, when I say there's different NFPA articles, NFPA 1500 goes to life and health and safety. NFPA 1403 is the standard we use for training birds and stuff. NFPA 1001 is our officer qualifications. So it just goes on and on. NFPA 1911 is the recommendations for fire apparatus. And I just wanted to point out, when we, when we go clear to the back in Appendix D, I'll read the last sentence, NFPA Fire Apparatus Standards, or that fire apparatus for over 25 years old should be replaced. So it's in our standard. We try to follow the standard as close as we can because it's, it's a guide to protect us, it's a guide to not only just physically protect us, mentally protect us, it also protects us for liability if we stay within those guidelines as best as we can. So I just wanted to bring that up, that I'm, I'm not just making it up that we need to replace a, a 30-year-old truck, but it's in our standards.
Pretty much he answered my question with that email, based on age and mileage. So that helped me.
Mileage is kind of irrelevant. It's the age and.
So you got seven units down there, Roger? Is this kind of the, we're just lucky enough to be part of the crown jewel, one that has to be replaced this time?
Yeah. It looks pretty, but it's not.
I don't think anybody said, no, we don't want to do this, it's just that it's a big jump, and jumping in.
I understand.
To sign off on that one is, it's a big deal.
Yeah.
I know you know that, so I think it's one of those things, making sure we're.
And that's why I wanted to keep putting it in front of you, I made different times.
I think we're all in, it's just, you know, trying to figure out how that process works with bonding and all that kind of stuff is, you know, it's above our pay grade, so it, but these guys represent the folks that want to make sure that you guys are confident enough to fire it up and take it out and do what you need to do, so. Because I get it, you know, you want to be safe, you know, because you're trying to provide safety to someone out there that calls you, but you want to be safe doing what you're doing, so.
You know, we, mileage has been mentioned in the past.
Yeah.
A fire truck might drive three miles down the road, but they're running for 10 hours.
Yeah.
So if you look at engine hours and pump hours versus mileage, it's just way out there. So.
Yeah. All right, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Any other comments from anybody? Questions?
Do we have a new date for budget, next budget workshop?
Not yet.
Okay.
I'm just curious.
Roger's showing the faces here.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. All right.
Kyle's maybe disappointed, he said I got canceled.
Yeah.
I'll make him the guest speaker, he can talk about bonds.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
You're welcome.